Town board to order on this 28th day of September 2023. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and its republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam clerk, would you please call the polls?
Certainly. Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman McChamara.
Here.
Councilman Mortel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Ciboni.
Present.
Almost. Never gonna happen.
Never. Never gonna happen.
You're gonna have to give them like the last one, Tommy.
Hurting cats.
I feel sorry.
All right. So we're all here or present. All right. So we're gonna start with a discussion of the Riverside Maritime Park Trail Plan. I want to invite a few people up to the forward table. Janice Shearer, County Planning and Development Administrator. Dave Wilcox, our Planning Director. Nick, how do you say your last name, Dennis?
Jimenez.
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 Tom Allen, Town Engineer.
Welcome, everyone. So I know there was a resolution on that we tabled because the board really hadn't had an opportunity to talk about the plan for this waterfront park. And I wanted to see where we were before we awarded a contract to, was it Landtech or something? I can't remember who.
Yes, Landtech.
So who wants to introduce us?
Good morning. Thanks for having us. And sorry we didn't come before the resolution was on. You know, that was just sort of a procedural oversight. Dave's gonna give you the history. Tom and Nick, it's been turned over to engineering as far as getting on the ground and getting the work done. But at your direction, Supervisor on the board, we're really excited that we're finally at a point where we're going to have, you know, commence putting this park in. And this is all, you know, part of the revitalization of Riverside. So I'll turn it over to Dave.
Sure. So this has had fits and starts over the years, but we got to the point where we finally had a concept plan that we took to the county park trustees. I presented it to them at one of their meetings just after everything opened up after COVID. And they had a few issues with it. And they recommended some changes and some revisions. What I've handed out is the concept plan that was presented to the park trustees and which was approved by them. We have resolutions approving that concept plan and also approving the PRB, which is kind of a parallel project that's happening in the park. The second page of that handout that I gave you has the list of all the revisions that we made from our original proposals. I don't know that I need to go through that, but if you go through it, you can see how we've scaled it back and taken out some of the items that the trustees thought really didn't comply with the passive park definition for this property. When the county bought it, they defined it as passive parkland, and they had very detailed restrictions on how we could develop it. So we've scaled it back, and this is the concept plan that we're going with now. And as I said, the county has approved it. It's also been to the county CEQ, and they have also issued or recommended that the county legislature issue a NEGDEC on this concept. And so with this concept, we have turned it over to engineering for them to come up with a phase that we can construct at this point and actually get something started there. I think this first phase isn't for the entire concept plan, but it's for a part of it. Unless you have any questions, I'll turn it over to-
Before you do, so the properties that are involved in this park, and I've been involved with this a long time here. The properties that we started out with were county properties, but then we added quite a number of town acquisitions as well with CPF. The Catcove properties, et cetera.
These are only for, this whole thing right now is just on the county property.
That is just on the county property.
And subsequent to them saying, well, this is a passive park. You purchased the other properties. And we thought, well, that's okay then. We'll put the comfort station and those things on the CPF park.
So that's sort of where I was going because obviously CPF funds, which can be used to enhance access to open space and to create parking, can't be used on non-CPF properties. So a lot of these things, I see it's a half a million dollar price tag for this.
We have grant money, and that's also an important point here. We have, the initial grant monies are from the state LWRP fund, and they gave us money for construction, design. There was a pot of money for construction and for design. So we went through a lot of iterations with cash in. On a parallel track, Francia grant related to sort of environmental justice, and they had their wish list of all the things they'd like to see, and mostly revolving around the idea that the name of this place is Riverside, but there's no connection to the river.
Right.
And so connecting to the river was a major component of the plan, being able to get there. So, but the wish list of Francia had a lot of active park type of things. So we would like to eventually move those more active things to our CPF property. And this is really a trail, some overlooks, gravel parking.
Is there overlooks? Because I remember-
Not in this phase, but there will be.
Because, yeah, I remember earlier phases of this where there was little docks and things like platforms on the water, trails leading out. I mean, I envision maybe in some future phase where, you know, I mean, you have on the other side of the river, you have the walkway all along the river's edge, that we would have, you know, the potential to have a walkway, elevated catwalk, walkway along the water's edge, and even maybe potentially some pedestrian kind of like over these spots like this where you could continue the trail over the water, which is very doable in this area, and just create a really beautiful, you know, waterfront experience. Whereas this is great, but, you know, once again, yeah, it's Riverside, but you're not, I don't know if you'll even see the river from this.
You will. There are definite connections to the river. It's just that for this initial phase, in order, you know, just to be honest, in order to keep that grant funding, we have to show some actual progress here. And so we need to get the trail and get the parking, at least it's only a gravel, you know, access lot. And then we're moving to the permitting phase because all those catwalks and overlooks and kayak launches and things like that require DEC approval.
So I'm just confused a little bit here. Six, according to the revisions, number six, which is the group fitness platform that's been removed by the trustees.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the woodland trail, that's number seven on your map, Dave, which isn't shown here. Has that been eliminated too? Because I say realign the woodland trail to strata.
We're not proposing to build everything on the concept plan right now. This concept plan is proposed, we've built in phases, I think maybe two phases.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if they, in their revision or the review of this, they eliminated that, it won't be in any phase.
No, no, no.
No?
This is definitely the plan right now. We, Dave drew this up so we could understand what we went to the county with after the wish list of Francia.
Okay, so this is the before and that's the after.
Yeah.
They're not really before, that's the overall concept plan.
This is overall.
Which one? This one or this one?
Color is the concept master plan.
This one, so it does have the outdoor education center?
Well, under your revisions, it says eliminated the group fitness platform. Is that different?
Because that was more active rec, county property, and we can move that over to our-
So we want to move that to our?
Anything that was-
It's this one without the trail.
So this is the county piece.
Yes, the county piece. This is the woodland trail that we're doing in accordance with what they said we could do. Hundred percent okay with that.
So we're just moving one thing to another, but we're still the same-
And then anything ancillary that we need, that the community would like to see, you can consider that, and that will come back to you as to how that would be placed and used on the CPF land.
So the kayak launch, the fishing pier, that's all down the road.
That's down the road. Phase two on the county property, to be clear, but we need DEC permits for all that. So that takes a while, and we don't want to wait because otherwise we risk losing the money we do have, which is significant.
Do we need trustee permits on this? You mentioned trustees.
Part trustees. This is, the bottom land is owned by the state of New York. Yeah, Conic Estuary. Sorry.
With the players involved.
So this all looks good, as long as it's an early phase, I think that at least we showed some forward motion. But, you know, I did, last night I did a quick little drawing of like the future in, let me just pass it around, just for discussion purposes. I don't know how many I have, but just sort of illustrate what I was talking about, where you could probably have both the inner trail and an outer trail and platforms into the future, and maybe even potentially a water crossing, maybe even two of them. So I'm showing here the town pieces and the county pieces. So you, this plan that you guys have just includes the county pieces?
That's correct.
So, but in the future, and then I also showed two private pieces that one day potentially could be added if we're able to get them so we can connect all the way to McDonald's. So those last two pieces right now are not publicly owned.
Correct. And we have a lot of holdings here with the county and the town. And also the Riverside Revitalization Action Plan requires each and every developer to give toward a maritime trail so that you can effectuate this trail. Whether or not you can put all these platforms remains to be seen with the DEC.
Right, so the idea is I figured I'd show a few of them, and I'd show a few connections to Flanders Riverhead Road. So, and then I'm showing two parking areas because one would have the comfort station, the one to the right potentially down the road.
This is the county.
But, you know, I'm not trying to show exactly what they would look like, just kind of the idea of how you can have an inner trail and an outer trail one day as phase two.
Yes. And number seven on our concept plan is a woodland trail. And then number two is more of the paved, you know, surface that is ADA compliant.
Yeah, sorry.
So the number two trail that we're doing right now, the one that you see that's number two, that one is, you know, a paved surface so that you don't-
Anyway, so again, so-
I have a question about, you can overlay.
This doesn't conflict with the possibility of later getting a waterfront elevated catwalk?
No, it doesn't. And I mean, if you, you know, I worked on this project a long time ago, and it was called River Catwalk before it was acquired, so.
Yeah, we went through a lot of public hearings.
And so when you get there, you need to have the difference between-
Just the last point I'll say is that at least on the CPF piece, because it is, yeah, just the last thought here, is that on the waterfront, that catwalk potentially can be paid for with CPF dollars, which we have available on our pieces, but not the pieces that are the county-owned pieces.
Right. The county-owned pieces, we have, we have the money in our hand right now to do what we're asking to do. And we have the contractors on a requirements contract.
Right.
So they'll pay prevailing wage. Everything's already been worked out, so, and the money is already in our bank account to pay for.
I'll yield to councilmen's keep vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have 350 after this assumed to do phase two or at least get phase two rolling.
Okay.
So with a catwalk along, along the riverside here, when that comes to fruition, we need to know the differences, the engineering challenges between a freshwater wetland catwalk and saltwater catwalks that have storm surge, tidal, ice pack, you know, this is, I'm always interested in this, you know, when I was a kid, you know, you used to see the docks get pulled out of the, out of the mud, you know, in the wintertime when the ice freezes around there. So that is something that we would need to address there. On the other side, it's bulkhead. We are not going to bulkhead this. For some reason, the dredge spoils came onto our side years ago, and we're remediate, well, not remediating it, but it's, we're letting it revert. So that would be incredibly expensive trail.
Right, if you see these, this is like, this was literally like barge parking, you know, and when you look back at the past.
And now it could be an important water feature, you know, for us to utilize, yeah.
Absolutely.
And, you know, the, obviously if you have that waterfront catwalk, the use of the park goes up exponentially, right? Because now you're really attracting people to the area to go on that. And maybe one day either you have a connection by water to the aquarium, you know, to the other side, a little platform boat that could go across, or even potentially a pedestrian bridge or something.
They have discussed that, like maybe the aquarium doing a little Tom Sawyer boat to do educational programs across the way.
So there's, there's all kinds of possibilities once you get to the waterfront.
Great.
Was the, was the Conic Estuary grant also for this area?
No. That was for the dredge spoil area at Schumeta parcel, but mostly for a concept plan for anywhere along here that you want to do a restoration plan, but mostly it will revert a lot of it, but we, you can sort of dig out some elevations to get the, like Spartina or different marsh plants that are conducive to that area. But, yeah. So we're excited. I think that there's so many possibilities here, and you have great ideas, Supervisor Schneiderman. I think it's going to be really nice, and at least we can get the first phase in, which is actual access and a trail. That's really all we're looking to do right now, and then we'll proceed with the permits, and then we'll see what DEC has to say, and then we'll come back.
What's the timeline on this once we approve the?
For construction of phase one?
Yeah.
This full contract is ready to roll.
That'd be awesome.
I assume we'll see yellow machines by Halloween.
Nice.
So town board approval, we're already on contract with them based on a requirements contract, so week or two mobilization after the town board meeting, so.
Is this going to be a Suffolk County park or a Southampton Town park? When you pull into the driveway and you see the sign?
I think it's both. I think they, in our municipal agreement, it actually talks about that.
I think it does.
And I think you have to say Suffolk County and the town of Southampton.
The world should know we're building this out.
I think it's like together, you know.
Yeah, they were Suffolk County on the top of the design and Southampton in conjunction with the stuff, something like that.
Can I ask a question? You chose to put the vehicular entrance to this park right across from, is it Vale there or, I can't remember?
We're utilizing-
It's right across from a street, but it also has this weird fork in it. And I'm just wondering if that's a safe place if vehicles, you know, coming from, what is this, the, the south to turn in?
We're planning to utilize the existing curb cut that's in the sidewalk right now. If vehicles are coming from, do you mean the west, Mr. Supervisor, on 24 or on the south?
I guess it's east. Vehicles coming east, I've seen north now. So vehicles coming from the east would be turning.
Right.
Right.
Would be turning right. So, yeah, vehicles coming from the west would be crossing traffic, but you also have that other street to the south.
There is a center turn lane right opposite that, so.
Are we creating conflicts there potentially?
Whatever, tenement lane.
I believe so.
Okay.
We have a center turning lane that can be utilized to turn left into the parking lot. And anyone who will be exiting Vale and heading west on 24 will be crossing into the westbound lane, they won't be utilizing the center lane to join, and-
If somebody were making a left into the park from the west?
Yeah.
That's not a conflict?
I mean, there-
Well, there's a center turn lane.
Well, in your revision 19, they talk, right? That's eliminating the need for the turning lane on 24, shifting the parking area and entrance to the east, take advantage of existing curb cut. Is that related to this?
Yes, and when cash in first-
So these are, this is feedback from the county based on what we had presented, and these are their, I mean, they're eliminating bioswells that's made the parking lot smaller. I mean, I think this is all tolerable, but it's not what we proposed originally.
They wanted us to just have a very low-key parking area, not like this big lighted, you know, thing. It's just sort of like if you ever went to like Cranberry Bog or like those kinds of like-
No, it makes sense to me.
Trail access. So picture it like that, more so than this over-engineered.
We also imagine this to be five to 15 cars at bay, so.
Yeah, I mean, you're not talking about a lot of-
Well, they eliminated the comfort station, communication service, all these things that we talked about.
If you said it's flooded, it's really eliminated, but we can-
There's plenty of room to make that turn, and with the lower volume of-
Or is somebody waiting in that left turning lane to pull into the park? You could make the left there.
Yeah, there's plenty of sight distance across that triangle. It's not vegetated. I think there's like a bush in that, so.
Tom, are there any planned upgrades to the crosswalk?
We, we look to ask for a rapid flashing beacon with CDVG funds for this area, but we would have to coordinate with the state since it's their right of way.
You say at the crosswalk?
Yeah, there's an existing crosswalk, there's existing signage, but it's not of the quality of signage that we've done for the Bridge Hampton Improvement Project where it is a push button flashing beacon. Like, I drive this, this route almost every night, and you can, it's, actually, it's quite difficult to see pedestrians in that crosswalk, so it's a good time. So a rapid flashing beacon upgrade there would be well-served.
I mean, this really looks to me like it's cost, they've taken a lot of cost out of this by removing a lot of things.
Well, they just didn't want it to be too much, I guess.
Too much of a center, yeah. And I, and I get that.
We get that, we just want it to be useful and somewhere you want to go. And also now we have the connectivity to our CPF land, and we can, you can think further about what improvements you want to have there.
So are we working on improvements to our property to these?
We have not.
We'll call that phase two?
We could, we can.
Okay.
Commence that. Yes, we're just trying to get this done, you know, like that.
So most of the things that were eliminated that we're putting into phase two is everything that the public, you know, asked for, and we tried to add and are still asking for. My phone's blowing up right now. Everybody's going, woo-hoo, you know, that, you're going to break ground soon. So, I mean, we're going to try to put a lot of this back in phase two, right? And a little connectivity will be great, yep, and we'll have no problems with any of that.
Yeah, because then once you have, and then we'll add that, you know, it loops back around so you come back out, but you can then create, we can work more on the maritime trail and how that on the inner woodland trail will connect to CPF.
Are we planning a second parking lot?
Not at the moment, but obviously anything is on the table that you want to see and the community wants to see. We have no objection.
Well, if the bathroom is going to be potentially on the CPF plan, we probably want to have some parking over there, too. Otherwise, you have to go all the way down the trail just to get to the bathroom.
Yeah, because there's water service and things like that that we're taking out on the revision side of things. I don't see a problem with that, frankly.
Is the parking area, it's all pervious, is crushed down?
Except for the ADA access.
So there'll be one small concrete pad for a couple cars?
Yep. And then we're going to extend the concrete apron, the asphalt apron after the curb cut, just so when a vehicle is sitting on that pad, getting ready to pull out on 24, they don't spin any tires on gravel or anything like that.
Is there any, well, I'll hold the elimination question for a second, but the, the original plan called for like bioswells or rain gardens, that's all out now? Or is that-
At the, what we're doing at the water side is more invasives removals first, because it's just, you know, gnarly, and so we're trying to get that removed.
Because if there was a water quality component here, CPF could potentially pay for that, but.
So they eliminated wetland and shoreline restoration, but retained invasive species and rural.
Yeah, so like before you restore it, you really have to know what you're dealing with, and first things first is get rid of all the knotweed and invasive.
I think this helps inform what you're calling phase two. I think this actually helps inform the next week.
Yeah, it's by far from over. We just need to at least begin.
Get started.
So we just want to start.
So just back for a second, so there's no water quality component at all to this plan? Nothing CPF?
Not at the moment, but we have funding for this whole thing, I think.
We have funding, yes, we'll find it. And is there any illumination or is it, there's no lighting at all, no parking lot lighting?
Well, closes at dusk. The park closes.
How does it close?
So, I mean, it's not meant to be utilized.
There's no gate that locks, right?
It could be. We didn't do that, but we could put a gate.
Yeah, we didn't put that in.
Something that could easily, you can confer.
I don't know, I think you want to be able to have police drive into the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, they can drive in, but, you know, in other words, there's no lighting along the trail, along the path.
Yeah, but I, I think you need that. I mean, even a small park like Dandres local park, people that come in at night, and it's-
You need a gate, is that what you mean?
I'm, I'm thinking you do.
We'll make sure to consult with-
I don't know, but we've had issues here in the past.
What you feel is appropriate.
Yeah. We've had issues with watering out in the woods there.
Yeah, but you also get it with a gate, you know, a gate limiting car access you get where people will then feel comfortable going in there to do things they shouldn't be doing because they know nobody's driving in there to see what they're doing.
I agree with that. I think that's something we need to think through, but-
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could also have a camera there, like we do in some places.
It's quite easy to add a gate if we find that it's becoming an issue, so.
Add gate, add camera.
It's a question mark.
It seems to be a consistent issue.
I, I'm not saying we should add a gate or a camera, I'm just saying these are things to think about.
Potential. We can talk to Kristen about that, and that would be-
Like, you know, we could wait and see how it goes, and if we're having issues, you say, okay, I guess.
Start locking the gate.
You might even, some vegetation might need to be cleared so you have more visibility into the area.
That actually is part of the plan.
I mean, some we're just using a chain link. That's all.
Okay.
That seems to work.
So you can see the parking lot?
And that was the thing, we want people to be able to feel safe and use this trail, so, yeah. So we will be clearing, you know, along the trail in a fair swath so that you don't like, you know, feel unsafe in some-
With ADA, you want to be able to, you take a wheelchair down the trail, right?
Yes.
But also in this era of Lyme's disease and everything else, you want to be able to have a wide enough trail that you don't brush against any vegetation, so.
Yeah, it's an eight-foot wide trail, the maximum clearing to meet grades in a couple spots is 24, but I'm thinking it'll be at least four feet on either side when it's meeting existing. So you'll have a-
All right, any other questions? All right, we're ready to move forward then.
Great, thank you so much. And I just want to thank engineering Nick and Tom and Dave, they've done a ton of work when we came to grant, Dave, especially with all the reporting requirements.
Yeah.
It's been quite a bit of work, so I really appreciate it.
I would've liked to have been a fly on the wall.
Yeah, I just don't want, this is great, I just wanna want this to be the end, I want this to be the beginning of the maritime park there, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks. So this is on for next meeting.
All right, so we're gonna move on to updates. I think this weekend's the Sag Harbor Music Festival, right? That'll be fun. It starts tonight. Lots of local live bands, a lot of talent in the area. So the fir-, uh, besides that, the first thing I wanted to say is, and I know the board's already aware of this, so Governor Hokel did sign the bill yesterday. That bill does extend the, um, the timeframe for the effective, uh, tax line for the trustees, so. It would have been this next tax, this next fiscal year, now it's the following fiscal year, so. A part of me is a little bit sad that we were not able to reach an agreement with the trustees in terms of, you know, how staff would be disciplined and, and other, um, use of town services and buildings, et cetera, um, that's unfortunate, so, um. So, uh, we have another year, or I shouldn't say we, cuz I won't be here, but, um, you know, I, I know the board will work, uh, into next year on this issue, trying to figure out how to, uh, what, what type of, uh, documents are needed to, uh, fully understand the roles and responsibilities of the two boards. That does sort of tie in with the budget because without the governor signing it, um, there would have been a tax line, there would have been money into the trustee's account that, uh, would have gone toward all these, um, various trustee budget expenses. So now the budget is, you know, I can finalize the budget and I am finalizing the budget, very, you know, similar to the, this year's budget, it's no, no different. The funding levels are more, the, um, and my budget is, uh, coming out, it's just a proposed budget or tentative twenty twenty-four budget, it's my last budget. My eighth budget as supervisor that I've been involved with, and, uh, it should be finished and delivered to, uh, Sunday on, um, on Friday. So I, I probably technically have till Monday, it's, it has to be by the last day of September, which I think falls on Saturday. This, but I, it, the plan is to have it to Sunday and to you guys, um, tomorrow, I can't tell you what time, but. And then it's, uh, in your hands, so we can debate, um, funding priorities, you know, was not, you know, it's never an easy budget, but it was, the, you know, it stays within the tax cap, and that's been a real challenge in a high inflationary environment. We've had to increase salaries so that our, we can recruit employees and so they can live in a high cost of living area. The cost of everything's been going through the roof, as you know, everybody knows, uh, because of inflation, so, um, it put a lot of challenges on the budget. But I, I was able to stay within the cap, so, uh, um, and then, and there's a little cap flexibility, I didn't go all the way up to the cap. There's, uh, there's some wiggle room, if there's some things that I didn't fund that you wanna fund, but you may choose to unfund some of the things that I chose to fund. And that's really, it's really up to you, so we will, we'll have that debate. And as time progresses toward the adoption of the budget, we tend to get more details from, uh, the controller's office and from others. For instance, I've asked the county executive to budget more money for, um, sales tax for our police, um, than we had this year. I haven't seen the county's budget, I, when it comes out, I will know whether that's something that we're likely to get. I asked for another three hundred and sixty thousand roughly, and if that comes into our police department, that will, um, create some, uh, more, uh, flexibility or we can, uh, use it to reduce the tax levy. So any, any questions about any of the trustee issue or the budget issue?
I have a question about the sales tax, uh, from Suffolk County, what are some of the increases that we're seeing on the east end from Suffolk County? The hotel taxes, I mean.
Well, I don't know how much we will get, there isn't, they did change the hotel tax from like three percent to like.
How much more are they, is the county realizing?
It went from three percent to like five and a half percent.
I know, it's significant.
So almost doubled, the hotel tax was generating for the county twelve to thirteen million, so it almost doubled. So it, let's say they'll have twenty million dollars, um, some of it currently is programmed for this convention center in Islip. And the Discover Long Island went from a two million dollar budget to a six million dollar budget. There is some dedicated funds that the legislate, uh, the east end legislators will have, it's like a million dollars for tourism promotion. Cultural, those things go to historic venues and, um, uh, cultural things, performing arts centers, if they said, so there'll be a little bit more money hopefully for, for that. It's not fair by any means, you know, if, if we collect, you know, half of the new money, so let's say half of that extra ten million, we're producing five million, maybe we'll get a million back.
It doesn't just cover hotels, like in, in the brick and mortar sense, but it also covers, covers Airbnbs and VRBO.
Doesn't go, it doesn't do anything for hotels. Oh, oh, in terms of who collects the tax, so the whole, very little to me, you know, and I'm in the hotel business, very little, there's very little benefit that comes to east end hotels from the hotel tax.
Right.
And that's been a long-term criticism that the money is collected by us and then used to promote tourism in western Suffolk. We do not get our fair share, some of it goes to county funding, there's a dedicated line for the Vanderbilt Museum, for the Walt Walt Museum.
Well, they're also, they're also now going after those with rental permits.
Yeah, so, and, so that's, that's the, the new thing with this current authorization is they've expanded it to include, um, vacation home rentals. It was never explicitly said in the state law, now it says very explicitly that, um, vacation rentals as of June of this year are, um, subject to the ta- sales tax, and so the, the county is using this company called Granicus, and they are sending letters to everybody who advertises a property on Airbnb or HomeAway or Stay Marquee or VRBO or whatever it might be. There's lots of websites, and they're all getting letters that they, um, if they are renting short-term, they need to, uh, register as a, uh, sales tax collector. And they've tried to make it easy.
They want their money.
Yeah, well, they never were entitled to, in my mind, they never were entitled to that money in the past. The state controller and the county controller differed on that issue of whether the sales tax, hotel tax authorization included home rentals. Now it explicitly says it does, and so, um, you know, now there's no debate, and yeah, it's potentially a lot of money. It's a lot of money, there are thousands of short-term rentals on the east end, thousands, there are, um, way more than there are hotel rentals.
Right, that's the big. They're gonna get more money from. And.
Yeah, and we, we'll see.
In the future, we'll be able to see what the county's realizing from the east end, or are they gonna put it in different locations and, you know, you, we need to get a CPA on it to understand how they're getting the money and how they're distributing the money.
So that hotel tax figure that I gave you, that thirteen million to twenty million, could be put a lot higher if they're able to get that money from the, uh, short-term rentals.
Right, but it's still not distributed equitably, that's the, the real issue.
No, if you do rent for thirty days or longer, you do not have to collect, uh, hotel tax. And home rentals, even the short.
Right, then it becomes a.
Even the short-term rentals are not subject to sales tax, so if you stay three nights in a hotel, you are paying sales tax and hotel tax. If you stay three nights at a house, um, you're paying just the hotel tax, but you're also probably violating our code because we have a, a two-week limit, a two-week minimum. East Hampton has different rules, Southampton Village doesn't, they don't have a rental law, so, um, depending upon where you are, you know, you just have to figure out if it's permissible or not, so.
So I, I read our code as if, if you rent your, your, um, your short-term rental for three days and then wait another eleven days, you meet the two-week.
You probably.
The idea is that you don't have three-day, 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 and then the house next door is a, you know, it's a vacation.
I suppose you could put it down as a two-week rental.
Right.
And they left early, but, I mean, how do we enforce against that, so, yeah.
Right.
At least you don't have the constant ins and outs, that I think that was the concern, but, uh, you know, at some point you may, the board may wanna look at if it makes sense to ha- in areas that have very little hotel capacity, whether, you know, two-week minimum is the right minimum. There might be areas, let's say a house is located next to a hotel, or in a, uh, a zoning district that allows transient rentals. Maybe that house could be rented, by the way, without too much problems, so, um, you know, those are things that I think just work with Ryan on in the future and figure out a formula that makes sense. Some people feel short-term rentals reduce the amount of affordable housing.
Agreed there.
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure because if they're rented just as summer rentals, that's still probably more profitable than the year-round rentals. So you already, I'm not sure if they weren't short-term rented, that they'd be available for, um, affordable housing.
Well, I think it's incumbent upon us, our future boards, to, to articulate or, you know, enumerate how much the county gets from the east end, from Southampton Town and, and what we get back. We have the third-largest police force in Suffolk County, and, um, you know, that takes money. And, um, you know, to build a convention center is wrong, cock was a great idea, but it shouldn't be funded on one particular area of the county.
Well, unfortunately, you have the same issue with CPF, you know, that you have the argument that some areas of CPF, of the town provide more revenue into CPF because they have a greater density, home sales increase, and argue for having a greater say in how the CPF money is spent, so, you know, it can go two ways. That's, that, that's something to be concerned about, that how, that, that, that money is, that, because of the revenue source, it should not dictate how that money is spent throughout the town because of where it comes from, and that's the argument that they, that's made. It's a, I think it's a hard thing to lock, but I always think of CPF as that, cuz heard the argument over and over again, well, we provide more money to CPF, we should have a greater say, and you can't hold that argument, you know?
Uh, you know, on.
I was talking about the county, but.
Well, but it's, I mean, I'm talking about the process, it's the same kind of thing, it's like, we product, provide a lot of money to the county and it comes out of the east end that isn't equitably returned to us, and, uh, you know, in form of revenue or, or needs, right?
That's why you often hear conversations about Pecana County.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of the sales tax, which is the main funding for the county, is derived on the east end. There's no doubt, I've never been able to get accurate numbers, but just from construction materials alone, it's, you know, I'm sure hundreds of millions of sales tax that gets collected.
Yep.
From our construction industries.
I mean, we're still arguing about the people who, three years, you know, finally the, the controller, we finally got the thing with the IA systems where people were being basically taxed on, on, on a grant, on a rebate, and they're still arguing with people three years prior to when they say the law isn't forcible, those people still have a tax issue with our IA system plan, you know, that, that, to me, is not equitable either.
Good argument for Pecana County.
Yeah.
The last, the last, the last two, two, two quick things.
Hey, before we get off that, we, as a town, we also provide a lot of the services that counties provide.
Yes.
You know, we have a licensing review board, that, that's a county purview, and, you know, we've adopted that years ago, and, you know, we, we do that and also social services and a number of things that are really jobs that the town of Southampton does.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and well, and they also use a lot of sales tax into the police department for things that are available to us, but we tend to not use, um.
The Suffolk County Police Department serves the five western towns.
Suffolk County Police Detect, for the, like, the detectives, we have our own detectives, sometimes we help, they help us. Certainly things like the medevac helicopter, w- w- we use and depend upon, but there is a lot of administrative costs of Suffolk County PD, a growing amount, and, you know, they, they take, I wanna say, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million dollars out of county-wide sales tax that goes into police administration, some of which, you know, like the gang unit or the hate crimes unit, we will tap into. But for the most part, we are not, you know, it, it's very disproportionate, most of that is targeted at, um, western Suffolk where the Suffolk County PD is in place. So the two, two other issues, one is, um, a couple of months ago, we had a beach whale in Hampton Bay, it actually was in the Shinnecock inlet. Came into Shinnecock Bay, we dragged it out, um, buried it on the west side of the Shinnecock inlet on the, the beach there, and, uh, that beach is like gone, so, you know, where we buried it was pretty far from the water, but now that whale is exposed. So the, um, the beach is gone and, um, the whale blubber and even some of the bones, ribs and things like mandible are, are, um, have been uncovered, so I think they were out there today with the county, and, um, they are, um, removing the exposed portions of the whale and reburied them further west where the beach is, um, still thicker as you approach the Ponkong Pavilion, still pretty far from the pavilion, but west of where they were buried. So that is being taken care of with, uh, Atlantic Marine Fisheries, uh, Marine Mammal, what is the organization, Robert Di Giovanni, is working with Nick Gibbons at County Parks and I guess County DPW. So the county is taking the lead on moving the whale to a different spot. We had discussed whether we should cart it to our, um, transfer station or other different ways to dispose of the whale. But it's, the plan is to have it reburied, um, there, that beach, and I've said this before, is getting very thin, and we have another, um, coastal event coming in the next couple of days where we're gonna potentially see more beach erosion, so. I'm just gonna keep an eye on it, but, uh, you know, we're gonna have another storm surge, uh, another, you know, coastal flooding incident, and, uh, we have some stockpiled sand, um, we can try to shore that area up. The good news is that there will be some sand coming in, I think about a month from now, when the county dredges the inner cut, um, of Shinnecock Bay. So as you go into the Shinnecock inlet and turn to the right, um, to, you know, to the east, that's, that, that navigational channel is going to be dredged next month, and that's some of, that sand will be placed on the beach, so. It's, that should get us hopefully enough sand to get us to FIP, which is, Jim, what, FIP's about a year away?
Yeah, we're probably looking at, um, fall of twenty twenty-five, I think right now is the schedule for, for US Only Corps of Engineer, yeah.
So, so I.
Maybe, maybe a little sooner, but probably.
Yeah, I don't see us making it to twenty twenty-five, is, even with the little bit of sand that we're gonna pick up. So, uh, we're gonna have to really think that one through, and there may be things that can be placed along Dune Road, that may be that, um, you know, s- some kind of inner core to that dune, if that dune washes away, not just to pile up sand. With the house that got buttressed, they used, um, some cages with filter fabric and they dumped the sand into the cages, they're very inexpensive. But, uh, it does keep it in place, so when the waves break against it, the sand doesn't wash away. But, but some kind of temporary structure you, uh, you, we may wanna explore with Ryan, uh, is what's out there, what the state can provide, what the county can provide. Even like a, a Jersey wall or something, a concrete, just to keep the waves from rushing across Dune Road if that dune disappears.
But the ocean's coming.
Just the constant issue.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, but, uh, waiting two years is gonna be a, a challenge. So anyway, but, uh, you know, I'll be, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll be watching the, the next couple of days for sure with, with Ryan and the police department and the harbor masters, um, and, you know, be getting updates as to, uh, this coastal event and the integrity of that remaining dune. All right, um, that's all I got.
It needs an annual sand pass-through system from the east side of the canal to the west, and I, I know it jets into, into the bay as well.
That's not the plan, the FIP plan doesn't call for that, the FIP calls for.
But this is a problem that was created by the Army Corps of Engineers when the canal was made, and.
That, I agree, that is what's needed, but that is not what's approved, so what's approved is a three-year system. Every three years, they come back.
Right.
They, so they're basically, the sand that piles up on the east side, then eventually gets sucked into the inlet, some of it ends up on Ponkong, um, Beach, but it misses this one section. And so every three years, they come back and they dredge the inlet, and they dump the sand on that area by the commercial dock. And, uh, that's what they're calling sand bypass, it's just the three-year wait time for each time they move the sand to where it's supposed to go. Yeah, it should be on a, a frequent basis, and if you look at aerials, you really see how the, uh, the Meadow Lane side is, the beach is just enormous, and that jetty is way out here, and then the sand sort of shoots past it and it sort of skips this area and then comes in, eventually washes in by our pavilion at Ponkong Beach, that area, that beach is getting bigger. But this one cove, the wave energy is really intense and it just, uh, it's sort of the waves sort of scoop out the, the sand, eject it, and then it, it ends up further west and, um.
And we've got a commercial, you know, fishing dock down there and what, thirteen businesses?
Yeah, yeah, the, the Army Corps, I mean, I don't know whether it would make sense to lengthen the jetty on our side, um, or whether it, you know, or, I know at one point they looked at maybe like a T structure, like an L structure, um, to knock down some of the wave energy, but, uh, the current configuration isn't good for that section. It, uh, I think it creates like this eddy system when the waves roll in from slightly the east and they swirl around and.
Scours.
Yeah, it swirls.
In a direction to, it creates swirls that go for miles.
It's a beautiful beach, but it's very bold.
The dynamics, the hydrodynamics are really fascinating, but, you know, the problem is, we're not working on the root cause hard enough.
Yeah, well, that, that, the Meadow Lane side, that jetty goes out so far and our side is, it's way back. It's been added to that jetty on the, on the east side, you know? So originally, if you look at where those houses are, it was, those houses were close to the water, now they're, it's a long walk to go from those homes on Meadow Lane to the water, that beach has gotten, it's up hundreds and hundreds of feet longer. And then, instead of taking that sand and moving it, they just made that, um, jetty further out. I don't know what year that was done.
So even when we get the FIP sand there, this same issue and this same dynamic, this same problem still exists.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's in the future, but something needs to happen there.
Yep.
These are businesses and jobs and private property, but we all know this.
Yep, all right, so tell me, John, what you got?
Uh, nothing at this time.
John?
I'm good.
Rick?
I'm good.
I have a few, uh, Saturday afternoon, I attended the opening of The Point at SYS. It is a beautiful fifteen hundred square foot space for youth and young adults with autism.
The Point at SYS?
Mm-hmm, Kim Cavell and Patty Tezullo have been working on this for years.
For a long time, it's happened.
It's a, it's, I mean, it's a very welcoming space, they're, they're welcoming the entire community in, they have Hampton Coffee, has donated a coffee machine, so they're buying the coffee and they're having a coffee club in there, this is a little cafe.
Where is it in SYS?
It's on not the main entrance side, the other side where the tennis courts are. It's on not the main entrance side, the other side where the tennis courts are, down towards the end, right, right next to the physical therapy office. But it's a great space, so they're, they're welcoming the community and you, for, I think, for a hundred dollars.
The portion of the building closest to north, to Major's Path or furthest from Major's Path?
It's the back end of the building. So you drive in, you make the first right, you don't go past the building, you make the first right.
You make that first right to go all the way to the end?
Yeah.
Of the building, okay.
Yeah, but it's a great space, and like I said, they've been, they've been working on this for many years, so it's nice they finally found a location for it. So that was, that was a nice event. Saturday evening, I attended the Flanders Fire Department Installation Dinner. I was able to present service awards. There were quite a few, but of note, Michael Spano and Joey Cavalluzzi were recognized for 50 years of service to the department. Flanders 75th Anniversary Parade is this Saturday, 3 o'clock on Flanders Road, Flanders Road will be shut down for a portion of it. Sunday morning, the Hampton Bay Fire Department was kind enough to let Christine and Scolera and I on their bus, where we joined, we had our, our team for Tunnel to Towers, it's the Captain Billy Burke team with Jim, and also Christine, Sean Cambridge, Tara Farrell and Christine Fenton. It was an amazing experience, so I just want to thank Third Assistant Chief Lou Stellato from the Hampton Bay Fire Department for welcoming us on that, something I'll never forget. And then last night, I attended the Suffolk County Fire Academy Medal Ceremony to honor those who went above and beyond the call of duty. We honored three Sag Harbor firefighters, Ryan Miller, Kevin O'Brien Jr. and John Schroeder II. They received the Bronze Medal of Valor, and Riverhead firefighter Justin Berry from Riverhead Fire Department received the Gold Medal of Valor, so it was a nice kind of week of honoring those who have served and served our community, and, you know, thank you seems inadequate, but I still want to say thank you.
That's great. All right, are there any other updates? Okay, so let me take a quick look at what we have for exec. Personnel, acquisitions, confidential legal advice. So I will make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items. Seconded by Councilman Bovier, all in favor?
Aye.